And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the meeting of District Lady Council, March 3rd.
Fisher Brown?
Here.
Sparks?
Here.
Wyatt?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Nappala?
Here.
Gambino?
Here.
Grant?
Yes.
Through the minutes, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have to move that we review the minutes from the meeting in February 17th.
Second.
Name the seconded, all please.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Nappala?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
I'll do a council table, Robert. Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the council table as presented.
I'll second that.
Name the seconded, all please.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Nappala?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Uh, there are special orders. Item A, public hearing continued. Receive public input on regulations for medical marijuana for selling. Can we add any latest comments?
Mayor, if I might before you ask for comments from people in the audience, I just need to report that we have received no written testimony since the last city council meeting.
Thank you.
So the council should have gotten anything good.
Anybody in the audience? Well, it seems that Salem is having their problems finishing itself as well, so I'm sure something will come up in the future. So I'll go on to our next item. Interview point, uh, interview point applicants for city commissions and committees. Bill Scores was...
Johnny wasn't able to be here tonight.
Yeah, he had some problem, but if we could review that and see our ballot.
I do have extra ballots, if anyone needs.
For advocacy, do you have a little down here?
I have, sure. Thank you.
Yeah. There you go.
Okay, all the ballots have been turned in, and the vote is unanimous to appoint Bill Scores for another position on the city budget committee, which also means you serve on the urban renewal budget committee. Those terms are for three years, and Bill's aware of that. This has been like his third or fourth or fifth renewal. He's been on the committee a lot times, and I know he's looking forward to serving again. Thank you.
Do we need a vote?
Vote to accept the tally and...
Mr. Mayor, I vote that our two, I move that we accept the nomination and the voting for Bill Scores.
Second. Name the seconded, all please.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Nappala?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
And we will continue to advertise, there's still one expired term position on the budget committee, and then we have a couple on Parks Commission, and a couple on Sandy's Antiques Commission, and a couple on Traffic Safety Commission. So we'll be advertising for applicants for those again.
Item six, reports of officers, boards, or standing committees. We have anybody who would comment on that? Okay. And who, who was gonna make the recommendation on the parks?
Again, Bill Scores was not able to be here tonight. He thought that Ken White was going to do, but I don't see Ken White. So all he can have to rely on is the memo regarding Parks Commission recommendation, Elsie Avenue approachment, that has a couple of attachments, a letter sent by the city, Brady, to Mr. and Mrs. Menon Hall, copy of the Menon Hall email that the Parks Commission considered after February meeting, where he offered to purchase the infillment area. And the Parks Commission motion was to, they moved to answer back to Menon Hall that the city take back its property and insist that the property owner move his peers back to his property, off the city property, and reject his offer. So that is Parks Commission's recommendation on that offer. And Brady has been dealing with this situation for quite a while. The memo's pretty short, so in between the first paragraph and the second paragraph, there's a lot of stuff. But Brady, you know, discommunications, et cetera. But anyway, that's before you tonight, as a recommendation from the Parks Commission.
Yeah, this all started in August of 14, 2014. So it's been a while. The gentleman lives in Texas, and he's, wasn't aware, and she's had several different attempts to try to keep the piers and ropes there, but all in all, he needs to get them back onto his property and make the area that was encroached upon and where the poles were put in back where it's natural. There's some salal and so a little bit of that, which probably have to be inspected. His yard is current, has late nineties property pins that are documented in the survey and top office really account. So depends are there, how open, fully visible to the contractor to move those piers back into his property.
I just have a question, Ray.
Sure.
Okay, I read in his letter and his response that, he says, "I hate to put up an eight to ten foot fence, because that would be really ugly, but I have to satisfy my insurance company's request," yada, yada. Is this eight to ten foot fence that he's...
Proposed.
Proposed, good word for that. Is that within his rights as a property owner? Is that, does that, would that be in confirmation with any city ordinances?
Larry could really help me with that.
Right, we, we do have fence regulations, essentially, they say that within the first twenty feet off the property line of the street, that's the required front yard, so fence can't exceed a height of three and a half feet. And once you get twenty feet back off that public, that street right of way, then you can go up to six feet without a building permit, and you can go higher than six feet if you do get a building permit. So...
He's gonna show you.
It'd have to be approved by the planning commission.
Uh, actually, no. It doesn't build the planning commission, but to date, we've considered any public right of way as a street. So in other words, we're going to go through greater than three and a half feet in height within the first twenty feet going back from both that east and south sides.
So if we look at our...
Presumably, that's why he did it.
So he has, this is a right of way around the whole northern section, and the whole eastern section of his property is right of way.
Right, that's correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. He could apply for a variance, and that would build into the planning commission, but he has to demonstrate.
Well, I was up there today taking a look at this after I read the correspondence, and I'm not going to say what my opinion is on it. I just think it was a very presumptuous move on his part to just simply take the property and build on it and then assume that it would just be gifted to him, even though he has made a rather substantial offer for the property. However, I don't, I don't, I have issues with the manner that he went about it, to put it that way. And so I very support of Brady of your, your recommendation.
Okay.
And yeah, too bad, so sad, life's at its end. Sorry, I'm a blunt person sometimes.
I don't like the precedent-setting aspect of it, so I agree with the direction myself. Okay, so precedent-setting thing, if we do anything out of it.
Yeah, exactly. And that's a really, really nice area we want to keep for the public, and it is a public right of way. They intend on putting a bench to the very south of that Elsie Avenue. And currently, it almost makes people walk into the neighboring yard with a broken pier.
Just getting to that point to look at.
I'll go over there.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Robert?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we redirect again Mr. Menon Hall to move his piers, albeit a beautiful job, piers and rope back to the, his legal property line.
Second on that.
Any other, excuse me, any other discussion on that? Call points.
Olson?
Yes.
Nappala?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
All right, I'll do public comments.
I have some, I came into some regular day on the schedule.
You want to come up with two, I told you earlier.
Not yet. I tried to get on the schedule for next week and find it for meetings today. I'm waiting for someone else from the Lions Club. When she gets here, we'd like to make a quick segment.
All right. Anybody else?
I guess they love us.
Yeah. All right, you have somebody, somebody else coming, you said that?
Yeah, I told her probably about quarter after seven.
She's, it's close.
It's close.
Okay.
I would do this myself, but she wouldn't be practical on what's happening.
That's all right.
No, I, can we give her time later to speak where her friend plays or...
Anyway, so we're not gonna take long.
Yeah, because we're gonna close by the time, right? We're gonna close her out.
So you don't know when she's gonna be here or...
I told her quarter after seven. You want me to try to do this myself?
Yes.
Yeah, would you do that?
I bet you do a great job.
Yeah, only I don't have the fact she does. Okay, just in case anybody doesn't know, we have a path to unlock. I live here in Deco Bay, I have a business there in Deco Bay, I remember the Lions Club. We had a meeting today, and it's the first one I've been after a while, randomly eight o'clock in the morning meetings. Part of the things that we discussed...
Pat, after our recorder over here, would you give us your name and address, please?
Pat Dunlop, 1270 Madison Walkwood.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to give the mayor and the recorder at the car stop a full copy of the minutes of our meeting today, the rest of you don't want to read through all that, sorry. But the last pages, she'll take one of these, pass them around, school page, you know. Back a while ago, Brent Barry brought it down to the community center for seniors, and basically the Lions were willing to take on the insurance. So I did some checking today, and Carleen, Lion Carleen, who has been a big time member, goes all the conventions, all the stuff, knows legalities, brought up some issues with insurance and things like that. That's why I wish she would get here. In a nutshell, she'll talk to you about the insurance liabilities. My understanding is that the Lions want to make sure that the events, say, Lions-sponsored knitting group. That way, their insurance covers it. And that also, they want to be in on the, say, as the kind of activities, because there's no alcohol, the Lions won't sponsor that. I don't think anybody's getting it turned down for a legitimate excuse. In return, and she'll give you the details there, anyway, they're in the Lions Club looking for some way to meet. They have two meetings a month, and you can see by this thing, the eight o'clock meeting is over at nine oh five. We're small, there's only thirteen members left that are still, I mean, there's thirteen members left. And we're on a recruiting case, don't know how to do it. I'd suggest that they hit News Lincoln County and just put in, invite people. If this would benefit us, because it would be listed as a Lions knitting group, Lions game night or something like that, something that would let people know that there are Lions around here. It's like I say, there's thirteen of us left. Most of you have seen me walking around my mint boxes, which reminds me, I've got to get the one out of the spotting horn, it's still sitting there. Well, I promised that I was gonna take one to Gracie's, but we just, as of today, if I can get the back these orders, it's gonna be decent looking box for a change. So that's about all. Do you have any questions? Is this sound doable?
Sounds very doable. What type of functions do you...
Yeah, that's, I guess I may be stuck on this committee, I have it in my mouth. Anything anybody can think of? My big thing is, yes, neighbors for kids is great. What's the majority of population in this town, like seniors? And we've got a nice building sitting down there empty most of the time.
I'm a strong supporter of community building, and I think it would be great for this, this town to have the Lions Club closer. And I, I have observed the Lions Club in other communities, and I think it would be a great opportunity.
I've been involved with the Lions Club in Central Oregon, and the only reason I got back involved here, because when they did the eight o'clock in the morning meetings, those of you that know me know I don't do mornings. It's not that I don't do mornings, but I can't do mornings. The way the whole deal goes, this one here sort of took over like the mint boxes from Lincoln City because their club dissolved. I understand their club is starting up again. Carleen is going to the meeting tomorrow, and then my minutes will be cut off at Kernville, I think they said. And then I'll have this side, and can put more emphasis in it. Now that I'm in a decent looking boxes, I'll be hitting every place in town I can think of, so...
You know, Pat, as I recall, I remember Brent, I thought it was a really great idea, and then this whole insurance kind of thing came up. You're, you're asking basically that Deco Bay allows the Lion Club to meet there free of charge and free of insurance, that's a nutshell, right?
Right. Well, utilities or whatever, like I said, we're in Carleen.
You're doing a good job. Hurry, we have a list of approved vendors.
I'm on, I checked the...
I just, that's what I'm...
We did look, we did, we did look at that. We call it the pre-bi list.
Right.
In other words, agencies and entities that have been authorized by the city council to not pay fees for using the community hall. The Sea Lions, any Sea Lions is not on the list. So, and, and Pat just mentioned that, you know, there's Sea Lions Club, and then there's a Lincoln City Sea Lions Club. We're the Pacific Sea Lions. I don't know what the heck they are other than Lincoln City Sea Lions. I don't know if they give themselves a fancy name like Pacific Sea Lions, it'd be pretty catchy. But if the council wanted to move to add the Pacific Sea Lions to the pre-bi list for the community hall, then you certainly can do that. We still require a deposit check, but there's no fee. So if you wanted to do that, you do that by motion, and we do that...
What it is here, do we have that booked out?
Oh, it, it depends.
Booked out.
Robert?
Thank you. Pat, I have a question tonight. Something you said, and unfortunately, my hearing's not so real. Something you said about alcohol, what was that?
The Lions won't sponsor any, any events that have any alcohol involved.
Okay, 'cause I thought I...
And that's why they want their name on this, because of their insurance.
Okay.
Now, go ahead.
Next thing, so they're willing to take care of the liability insurance? It's, I'm curious, do you know, I mean, we'll ask, do you know if that includes other functions like what Mr. Barry was discussing, or only Lions Club meetings?
No, that's anything the Lions Club sponsoring.
So if Lions Club is sponsoring you, Deco Bay Women's Knitting Group...
Yeah, I stopped in to see Brent's bed too, and with the hours he's working up with terrifically, you're not gonna see much of him, but he said that he would be more than willing to do anything along with this before he starts work at twelve thirty, or even go and clean up at night, or make sure that it's... And that was our concern too, is getting the key, because if you do the eight o'clock in the morning meetings, you guys aren't gonna be here for us to get a key at eight in the morning. That's all details that can be hashed out.
Well, that, that, I have some familiarity with this sort of thing. This is basically a sponsorship arrangement, and by the Lions Club sponsoring our community hall, we can have the insurance. And Brent then, and his vision is for us to make the community center more available to the citizens of Deco Bay. We haven't been able to do that because of the cost of insurance. So this really ties into being able to make this community hall a community hall.
Brent and I had a long discussion on this before he was...
Am I, am I close to what?
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I'm looking at a building sitting down there not being used. And I'm looking at a bunch of seniors who don't want to go very far, or shouldn't be on the road in the first place.
Absolutely.
Should be afraid of vandalism.
So don't we have a, a policy that covers that? Yeah, wouldn't that usage...
Well, if the Pacific Sea Lions filled out a use form, an application for using the community hall, and when they sign at the end of the form, like everybody else that rents the community hall, there is an indemnification clause, hard for me to say that word, right on the form, and right above where you sign it, and you say that, you know, if anything happens and the city's indemnified, it's a rather stringent clause. A previous city attorney had commented that he didn't think he would ever sign that, but it, it's very stringent. But everybody that rents the community hall, if they rent it, they're signing and agreeing to that.
So then, what, what do we need to do? Add them to that list?
For the free... Are we talking about for the meetings, or are we talking about for the groups that need a sponsor or... Yeah, anytime the Lions Club would use the community hall for activity...
Go ahead, Robert.
So do we presently have any reserved liability insurance on that? You probably do, correct?
Well, the city's insurance is property and liability, yeah.
So it's just another city building.
See, they were asking me about things like who's responsible for the electric and all that stuff. And I, I don't know, I just, I just had the idea.
I think we need to be clear on this. I remember what Brent proposed, I was here. And I jumped up and did, did a dance about it, because I thought it was a good idea. The whole idea, it's clear to me, is if we had insurance, and we had Lions Club as a sponsor of the community hall, then we can open it up to others, and then that, whenever you sponsored some kind of event, it might be for seniors or whatever...
Doing much in the line of event, event being a day or a day club or...
The, the, the insurance would cover that. The Lions Club insurance liability would cover that. Am I on the right track in understanding?
I think we're on the same ballpark, hey, just wish that Carleen weren't there, because she could have more of the details.
I think it's a good idea.
I do too. Yeah, you know, because we've had mushroom clubs, we've had chess club, mushroom club, there's been, you know, there's auxiliary, cribbage card, there's cribbage, there's...
The big thing here is that they might be able to get more members by having a sign on it. It says Lions Club, they're stuck up there at Fogerty Park, and you don't even know they exist, so that would be a good marketing advantage.
The meeting is actually at the Surf Rider, however, most of the people have been running.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion on this. I move that we allow the Pacific Sea Lions to enter into that agreement with us at no expense. You're on that list, the no-fee list, and the caveat would be that you guys provide the additional, the proof of insurance that's needed.
Yeah, that's...
I second it. Oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
I'll second it.
That being said...
Do we need, I'm just curious, do we need to pass this by our attorney, to see if there's any problems with this?
No, well, done, I've been done before in the past for like the auxiliary, I agree. I was here the night I did it, the auxiliary.
Oh, okay.
I, I don't, I'm just...
Don't ask me.
One more, one more.
Now, you're gonna put a sign on the community hall, right, say Lions Club?
I have a feeling that, I don't know if they're, well, if that's where the meeting place is, then I would imagine it would say the Lions meet, like the Surf Rider saying that we meet first and third Tuesday and...
It's gonna be a sign in the lawn, it's not gonna be attached to the building, obviously.
Well, it could be a sign in the lawn, it could be stapled to their, attached to the building. It's just, it's about this big, it's metal.
And that's appropriate.
It's not...
And that's just mounted on the time of your meeting? That's mounted on the time of your meeting?
Yeah, it's mounted with the location and time of the meeting. The problem that we're having now is, there's nothing about splitting it, so one meeting is morning and one meeting is evening, because a couple of our Lions have gone and taken jobs, so they can't make it in the morning. We can't do it at noon because our treasurer works, and he has to have a meeting before it works. So they're talking about, you know, a split on it, I don't know where it's going yet. We didn't have a forum this morning, we took five and a half people, and there were only five of us there.
Robert, I keep asking too many questions, but I think I, you know, what your thinking thought was there, and I'm kind of the same thing, is this a sign that would be there three hundred and sixty-five days a year?
Oh, once it's up, it's up.
So it would be...
It's not up and down, that's, that's part of signs, buildings and everything.
Is anyone else thinking, what I'm thinking is that a community hall no longer appears as the exceeding own community hall, but a Lions Club?
There's a lot of towns that have signs, as you go into town, saying that, well, we bug the whole nine yards.
Oh, yeah. It's a, it's a typical partnership with a nonprofit, and it's not, not unique whatsoever. Plus, they have the optical... Plus they have the optical, uh, uh, glasses and all that. They can be there.
I'm not, I guess maybe issues attaching the sign to the building.
This, this is a template.
Well, we can stick it to the ground. Would that be more destructive?
I don't know. Brady?
You know, I'm not sure about that. We can share. I don't have the answer for that, but we can sure look into.
Now, you're gonna put the signs on both ends of town saying the Lions Club is, we have the community center X, Y, Z date like other towns.
I know where the community center is. Maybe that's stock chamber or something like that.
If, if they wanted to, where the Lions Club meetings, they might have a sign somewhere else. We should, we can look into that.
I'm just back to the meeting with that, um, um, I don't know.
Last, uh, I saw that sign at the surf rider.
Yeah.
And if I remember correctly, it's, all it says is Lions.
It's the Lions, this thing here. This Lions symbol. And it gives a date, or it says first and third, um, Tuesday at eight AM.
It just makes note that the Lions reach there at that.
Right. So if we're gonna move from the surf rider, we're gonna need these signs anyhow so we can, we'll finally figure out what we're doing and we're in.
I really don't see any follow on it. Yes, Brady?
Um, Pat just mentioned something. We, you know, we meet the first and third, whatever days of the week, days of the month. May have to be flexible on that because oftentimes, uh, that, those days may not be available.
Well, that's what I, you know, even before you brought it up, that's what I was thinking too. With as few members as we have, it would take how long to tell everybody, hey, the meeting got changed from Tuesday to Wednesday? Or something. I mean, it doesn't have to stay Monday or Tuesdays.
Yeah. So, so posting a sign that says Pacific Sea Lions meets here in the mornings of the first and third Thursdays, that may not work.
Is it part of, is it part of your club's charter that a sign must be posted that way?
Let me put it to you this way. I took over the mints after we lost Tony. And that's it. The agreement I went in with is fine, I'll pay my ninety dollar a year dues to go out and collect money for you. I am not attending meetings. I am not going to convention. We were part of a small group over in Redmond and we did really well. There were eight of us. Then the recruiters came in and turned the whole time against the Lions Club, forcing them all to join. But we're not going there. I have no interest in the history, the, in other words, what I'm doing is, when I retired, I was looking for an organization I could get involved in that wasn't a drinking club, that was a service organization. The Lions Club fit the bill. So I saw the good that was coming out of being a retired special ed teacher. I saw, I saw it getting glasses and hearing aids. My God, they couldn't get them anywhere else. So from that angle, that's all my involvement is. Now, Carleen is on this board and that board and she can tell you all about what all goes on throughout the state and district and I have no idea. What do I care?
Maybe we should, maybe I should withdraw my motion for now. And then wait till we, with her with a little more clarity.
I have a funny feeling that the minute I walk out that door, she's coming in this way.
I was just gonna say, instead of maybe, because you do have to have some new signs made, you could just say Lions Meeting Place instead of those dates because your committee is so small that you could, you know, let everybody know, hey, we're gonna be this day.
Depot Bay Charter.
Right. Something like that instead of the specific dates because you can let everybody know.
It could be in their bylaws that they're required to have the dates.
Well, uh, let me just be a little more assertive here. This is not hard. I mean, this is something that happens in communities all over America and we don't have the Lions Club in downtown the depot bay. We should. It's, I mean, this is not hard to think through.
Um, I'd like to propose that we go ahead and vote on the, the motion. And with the details as far as signage and, and dates to be worked out in a later date, but to go ahead and take a vote on, on the pending motion.
Just a second.
Call the question. Thank you.
Yeah, can we, can we break, bring the, restate the motion?
The motion is that we allow the Pacific Sea Lions to use the community hall expense-free, providing they have the proper insurance certifications.
And I'll say that.
So, no problem.
All right. Any more discussion? Go on, please.
Can I call it?
Yes.
Yeah, Vino?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Thank you, Pat.
Good job, Matt. And if anyone has any other ideas, you know, the yarn thing's first in hand in my mind. You come up with any good ideas.
So what do you want me to do?
Community records on Sunday morning to compete with the one of us.
Eight AM.
Yeah, eight AM.
A good launch of party.
Be there at six.
Thank you, David, for coming in.
I'm gonna stick around just in case. Do you wanna talk to her if she walks through the door? Show her one of these on the food.
Worked good. Worked good. Made it time. Worked good.
Need me for anything else?
So, Pat, did you bring any mints with you?
Uh, you know how many, my mints are in the back of the car. That was the wrong.
You're gonna go out and get some, of course.
She's supposed to do that before we're voting, so not after.
You know, it's something sad. They have discontinued the mints that we're currently using. The company is no longer providing them. They're getting them from a different company and it's a different sized container. So at this point, um, I am going to find a way to engineer, um, getting the new mints in your block.
It's up with that.
That's true.
I'm gonna get pretty, um, creative.
Okay, thank you, Pat.
Sure, thanks. Carleen, I'm sorry, said, aye.
How do we, H A seven enhancement commission project at North President Horn meeting?
Vinnie Robinson, Chair of the Salmon Enhancement. I would like to thank all the council people that came up on Mr. Olson's suggestion to visit the site. I'm sorry, I did. It was very, it was wild. I think it was very productive up there. I think Brady included and appreciated that this.
It was a very pleasant way to spend the morning.
Since, uh, when I spoke to you last time, things have slowed down a little bit. And I, I think part of the problem is the, uh, the dock people are taking advantage of good weather and not building docks instead of doing diagrams and step dialogues to try to feel. Anyway, since we left last time, staff was gonna double check, you know, there was the motion of the, um, the committee that, that if we did this funding go through a nonprofit. And you checked on this.
Pardon me? You didn't get my email. Apparently not.
Very.
I sent you an email last week.
Correct.
Yes. I checked with the city auditor and she said that while the city, Salmon Enhancement Commission requires it, doesn't need a fiscal, a fiscal agent outside of the city. If so desired, she believed that one could be named. And what she advised was is once, um, the grant is granted, so you apply for the grant funding and you get awarded the grant, and then the city enters into the agreement for the funds, at that point in time, um, if desired, then another entity could be named as the fiscal agent for the project.
I did get that email.
Okay.
So just wanted to confirm with you. And, and we, um, with that prospect in mind, what was suggested from, uh, our, the head biologist at the district was for the depot bay SCAP program to apply for the grant. I know, not, not especially the city, but the SCAP program. And on the timeframe for applying for these grants, there's one that, depending on what degree or who you hear, it's either March sixth or the thirteenth. We are not ready for, have enough things in place to do that. So our thought process is wait for the next quarter, make sure that we have everybody on board and very clear on what we're going to do and who is responsible for what and how we're going to proceed. And if that funding for an application went through, it's about a six-month process. So we would use that funding grant somewhere around December twenty-fourth of this year. And we, I believe that it has a very large chance of being approved, if we do it cautiously and correctly. And again, I think what Salmon Enhancement wanted to do is apply for that and then the fiscal agent, we want to talk to neighbors for kids, they would be that fiscal, fiscal agent. But what that does, the way we see it, is it maybe opens the door to that five oh one for maybe some outside grant money to come in on that side that we couldn't do on the other side. And that, that is our, our choice on that. We've not received any of the plans back or a cost estimate on this. But reading through the recreation or the grant fund thing, you know, the, um, that fund, I don't wanna say it, it reimbursed your costs. So my question, it's been up to the biologist and trying to get from the the dock person and everything is, well, when the grant comes and they reimburse those costs, but who's responsible for the capital outlay? Yep, from, like, for that dock, for this guy's material and labor or whatever. And I have not received an answer yet on that. And I think that's a good, good question. I mean, if you put the order in, whether, uh, for something like that, in my experiences and what I've done, usually there's some kind of capital outlay to the people constructing it. And I, I don't, I, again, I don't have the answers, but that's my question. I don't know whether that comes back from, you know, a city budget or, you know, we.
You know, I was gonna ask you, I know one of the issues is the dock and the pen. Dock is in disrepair or is not in perfect repair.
Correct.
Is it gonna be safe this season for the penny clipping in the middle of July for the, for our residents to come up and help?
We could probably make it safer, reduce it, you know, if that, the people have seen that structure, there's the city structure and.
Yeah. Most, most of those folks stay on the, the dam area, the ground and rock. We can, we can make a point to, uh, maybe just have certain folks in the salmon, I mean, enter the dock and not have the public out on that dock as it sits. Because of the issues with this condition.
We, we, we went and tried to restrict it last year. It was a better job. What I would see is this is the last year for those structures that are there.
Yeah.
Pretty, I mean, if it's a safety issue, if the city wasn't involved just with the SCAP issue, we have to do something with that fish.
Are you gonna go ahead with the plan to do the, move those clips more so that they won't come harm's way when it comes time to draw down the reservoir?
We, we're planning, I'm gonna follow through it that way. I mean, the biologist said they're not hard to move. We don't know exactly when, but I guess what we're going to do is count on that the city is going to have to make some repairs up there. And so now your class won't be in that system.
Right.
And, and so, again, we haven't gone that far, but we don't know if there'd be penny clipping or not. I just have to come up to the biologist to, for some kind of way you gotta.
Okay.
We'll, we'll keep you updated on that. Looking at those grants, there's laboring kind and things like that. And Brady is going to ask you, I mean, if they're all the same, you know, permits in place, would you be aware of what kind of, I mean, I've asked them, but I've not had a reply. What kind of permits we'd be looking at there?
On a floating structure, I can't answer that question right now, but like a dock structure, it would be part Lincoln County's, uh, building inspection. We can ask Al Eames, the Lincoln County Building Inspector, and he can answer those questions as far as. That, that's something that's not a big issue. So we either have to get them or we don't. I mean, it's. And if we do get them, it would just be a matter of getting the inspector up there and showing him what we're doing, getting a okay sheet.
I doubt it would be an issue. And the docks that we're having are supposed to be used, what we want are the twenty-five year plan, the frog friendly on reel, the fish specifications for.
Right. I think maybe the gameline where we're, we have it, where it's gonna be abutment off, off the dam itself. To, if we have to have some kind of a, a concrete made structure to hold where the ramp goes up and down with the water level, then that may be an issue because it's a permanent structure or something.
Go ahead, Brady. Considering, considering that we've concluded that it's a safety issue and we want to move forward as quickly as possible, is there any, and assuming that that grant application is gonna be approved, is there any way that the city could fund, do some seed money on this to get it started so that it gets done, uh, more quickly instead of waiting around and then get the, uh, when the grant monies come in to pay back the city? Is that, is that an arrangement that's possible?
Um, I do know, and I, I read through quite, rather quickly, um, I believe this grant is structured like most grants. Where you do not, any money you spend before you get awarded the grant, it's not eligible.
Oh, okay.
That, that's very typical with these grants, so.
So we'll just have to wait. Okay.
My, I mean, what I read was, was it reimbursed?
Well, once it's awarded, okay, then that's, they, they send out a congratulations, you got the money letter. And then they'll send an agreement because you have to enter into an agreement for the funding. But from the date of that award letter, now you can start spending money on a project.
Okay, so that's what I'm really talking about.
But you spend the money and then you fill out their forms to get reimbursement. And I, so that's how, that's the reimbursement.
So we need to get you guys get the project approved and do that chap, that's our plan.
That's right. So, so am I following you right on this? So what, what, what Perry is saying is that once the grant application goes in, it's approved, then any monies that are spent, it could be reimbursed?
Yes. After that award, and, and Vinnie spoke earlier, their, their processing of grant applications is about a six-month timeframe. So you said that, you know, based on what we're looking at, um, the award letters would come out, you said?
Oh, so the award letter would come out. Okay, I get it. That clears, I was thinking that we would know maybe earlier that I, I, the dispersment even comes later than this after then. It would come next year.
Like I say, from the date, from the date of that award letter that said, that they send out and say, your grant application was successful. We're awarding you X number of dollars for your project. From that date, you can start spending money.
I get it.
And it gets reimbursed through, through the reimbursement process.
I get it.
Vinnie, I, I mean, Mayor, what was the, the budget for the repair or replacement of the dock, Kevin?
I don't believe they, they have one with their, doing a test for the ramp, I believe.
Right. We're looking at how much to do. Replace where that catwalk is, just like docks. And there's, from everybody that's up on the site, it seemed like that was a really practical way of approaching that problem in a practical way of.
Right. I just worry if you had any idea of cost.
We haven't, we sent the plan in. I mean, I was feeling like a law flower there this evening.
I guess I, uh, uh, as far as the, you know, because of, uh, and you're organized as a five oh one, three C four?
No.
And what are they, are you, there's no organization there yet?
The group?
We're just a staff project.
Okay. I was just gonna say, uh, about, I, I contribute to, to some nonprofits for advertising. I'm able, I could write it off one, more than one way as a business. Because they advertise, you know, thank you so and so for, you know, business or contributing to, uh, this, this project. I don't know. It might be one, one way to, to help, uh, depending upon what, what happens here in the next few months.
This, uh, this is kind of a dual project to draw. Uh, the, uh, the dam is part of it and it's, has to be addressed. Part of it is running away. That has to be addressed at the same time they decide what to do with the, with the dock going out there or floats beside it or whatever. So the city's gonna be involved in it, so.
Who does the design?
Well, right now, I was waiting for a design from Ken's. Well, right now, I was waiting for a design from Ken's.
So the folks in the program are gonna give you, okay, I get it. So they'll provide the, the, the plan of what needs to be done and then they're gonna give a group, an application or a grant to actually do their project and fund it. And we just kick in money and get paid back.
We, we, we've sent in what we think we want. And what he is coming back with is a plan, drawing up the specs, how he's going to build the dock and his cost estimate. And so then we can throw that into the grant process and see if we can fit all these things together.
So is it fair to say that tonight, this is more informational than an action item for us to deal with? Is that fair? In other, in other words, you're telling us where we're at and you're working through the process and you're just letting us know what things are.
Exactly. We, this is new territory for the SCAP program. Some people are familiar with different parts of it. But what we want to do is make sure that that has the best chance to succeed. We want to make sure that it's complete, everybody's informed, everybody's on the same page. And we, we, we'd rather take the time and get it right.
It's worth anything, I, I'd vote to fund it, by the way, today, but I know we're not gonna do that. It's a great project, it's a good first step. Thank you both.
Thank you, Beatty.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sorry to get too worded.
Thank you, Beatty. Are you, I don't know, be, are you concerned, still allowing in?
Yes, I got an information on that. I, Council, last meeting had me get signs, I purchased watch for children. Please drive, or cautious, drive cautiously or something like that, I can hear that's worded, but it's, it's another warning sign for drivers. And I got one for each side of the road. And I think I could integrate the signs into the same post, so I can watch for children, please drive carefully or something like that.
Could you, could you make that read that high recreational area has watch for children?
Well, actually, there's a near sign. Whoops, whoops.
Good exit.
These signs are already put together, it is.
Yeah, I've ordered, I've ordered the watch for children and please drive with caution, is what I had. Now, I've also was gonna purchase, I haven't done this yet, but you had mentioned the, below the stop sign at South Forty where folks stopped to enter Shell Street. It would say, no.
Cross, cross traffic does not stop.
Yeah, cross traffic does not stop. Yeah, I'm researching that, signs for traffic safety in Portland. They have, their website has about every sign that's made, they have.
Okay.
So, and they're gonna get high visibility, which is, it's aluminum, it's a little more, it's, it's a little more in cost, but it's the ones that brighten it, shine up in that way. You can't light it, rather than just the dull, so, you know, you can't, they're hard to see at night, I don't know. So, the cheaper ones. And it's, it's probably about twenty-five dollars, but I think it's, it's almost like it's lit up, you know what I mean?
Right, right, we need to, we need to, looks like markers all along the, down here, you know, the line up like that. But that being said, how about two-way traffic? Is that, you know, you start going down that road and feel like it's one way out? I don't know, you got, it's a great cycle.
When we do the upgrade on Shell Street, we're definitely gonna have two ways. We've, we've had a lot of success with the, the diamonds on Bay Street when we paved that. The, the yellow, rather than painting stripes, they never held up. We were, we were fighting or, or purchasing, striving about every other year, less than two years, we have to strike them again. So these little reflective, yellow diamonds, they, they pay for themselves. So that's a great item to add, because we're like this little guy, when we widen Shell Street. The Shell Street's gonna get an upgrade. We're, we're, we're hoping for sidewalks, I want to get up to the public with crosswalks in South Forty, crosswalks to the mailboxes and across the intersection for the school. And we can have all that upgraded and engineered. But hopefully, we'll get another SDA grant from ODOT to do this. And I, I don't know, I haven't decided yet, because we haven't been offered, but I'd really like to push for that. Maybe try it again or maybe get this in the budget. But redo the intersection, widen Shell, overlay, would have to be a whole road upgrade with engineering and everything. Maybe we can overlay Shell as it's widened a bit, but have the sidewalks engineered. So let's kind of work around that and folks just kind of hang in there and, and we'll do the best we can with signage. I, I think it'll be, this is, it's worth giving it a try.
You ready, Spock? So do you think the signs will go up?
I, it's probably, to be, probably another week, I think they're built up kind of. I didn't put a hot tag on the way to perform it, but traffic safety is out of port with their warehouses in Vancouver, Washington, so they, they get stuff down here real quick. So we'll.
You gotta dig for poles and stuff again.
Yeah, we'll probably put like four by four posts, crew, and use things so fast, but the, the crew gets them in pretty clear. And we'll, we'll do what we can. But I, I will get those other small information signs below the stop sign for Shell, for cross traffic. And the watch for children and drive with caution. But, yeah, I think when we do get a two-way lane, we can definitely address that with a little bit more signage. We're trying to get, there's some signs that aren't a code that are currently out by the end of the Shell Street, which are, it says restaurants and then city park. And I'd like to get that city park sign up to, up to the right height, which is seventy feet from the bottom of the sign is code, and get a new post there. Those are actually ODOT signs, so I may try to get ahold of ODOT, why not? They can reconstruct the, the signs to notify the public about where the market is. When you're driving on the highway, there's really no way. Anyway, that's kind of where I'm at on that, so if, if there's any more complaints, I'll, I'll probably hear from some of the residents, just if they come to the counter or if I run into them in town, I'll, I'll try to give them as much information that I have so far and where we're going with the direction of Shell Street.
I assume Maggie knows what we're doing.
Yeah.
Thank you, Brady.
Okay.
Under the Jesse Caldwell complaint, I understand you've done some checking on that?
Yes, so as, as far as the, the business that's down here, the little city hall, Eddie, they were a paving company, they did sweeping, parking lot sweeping, and he did striping. And I, I looked for hazardous chemicals that may have leached into the ground up there. And I, one of the employees were there and I talked to him and walked up there and he just said that it was a staging area for their employees to, to get the trailers out and, and stuff. There, what I did notice is he had tach oil that they loaded, which is no longer there, the tach oil tank. But there was some spillage here and there, it's basically just tar. And the other issues were some barrels or, or pike out containers of like Chevron transmission fluid buckets that were kind of tossed in a pile from here and there, blowing around in the wind. So there's, there's a lot of debris there that the owner needs to address and clean up. There's some sweeping pile from, from parking lot street lanes to outbuildings that are dilapidated. So it, it may be an issue where we need to write him a letter and, Council directs me out, we write him a letter and have him, you know, clean his lot. There's another gentleman that's building on South Forty that is below the hillside and he's getting a lot of old tire rims to the trash and stuff that's rolling over the bank. And he's cleaning that bank up and installing a tanning log. And he has some really high concerns too about the, the dilapidated stuff that's there, old equipment to trailers. But like I said, it was a, it was a business for, you know, the guy had for, for many, many years. So I think he's, he's sold all of his equipment, there's a lot of stuff left over. He still owns the building in that property and he's out of the country right now, but I can get him a letter and email.
No, I have a question.
Sure.
Brady, on that letter, now you're on this group, not sending the gentleman a letter. What's the recourse if he does nothing?
Oh, we could, uh.
I mean, can't go up there and beat him up.
You know, we could let him find us against him.
We can do that?
Yes. But I have to get, you know, get, start the process.
And I know you didn't do any testing, because that's not your place to do testing. And you had said something to me that you were concerned some of the tailings might have hydro problems in it.
Yeah, yeah, there was some of that chemicals that could have synthetic organic compounds, volatile compounds that do show up in, in water. It's quite spendy though to do, it's about three, I figured it's three hundred yards to the intake area in the part where we have drinking water intake at South Creek for an emergency backup. We're, we're not running up that currently, we, we haven't in years. We, we operate the pub just to keep the water rates going. But the sample there and raw water and, and sample third follows and synthetic compounds is quite expensive. I didn't get a real total price, but it's over a thousand dollars, just for a grant sample.
Is it possible that we could require the owner, in this, you know, this letter that you'd like to send him, require him to do any testing and remediation at his expense, since he's the one that caused the problem?
He may on his property and that's, that's a question I could maybe ask EQ. And at this point, they're not involved. It could be involved if, if, if they need to be. But we have to start with a letter and then see how things progress from that point. And I think that's the normal procedure for a situation like this. So I think that's, that's a good place to start.
Okay.
And I would keep the council updated, I will definitely keep Jesse updated. We run into each other a lot and, and I know there's a concern for the, for the homeowners down below. And now that that gentleman has cleared that bank, it, it opened all that up to them to see everything here. So it was a heavily brushed area, so it, it may come to the council or myself. You know, even, even worse now, maybe more than the summer comes on and more folks are aware of it, so it's, it's sore up there.
Brady, we need a motion to proceed with this to have Brady write a letter.
I, I heard Brady ask, say that we may need to write a letter and have the city council director to do so.
I move that we, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we direct staff, Brady, to write a letter to the owner of the property, stating what we're doing.
Senator.
Call please.
Camino?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Spark?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Mackler?
Yes.
Thank you, Brady.
Matt?
Yes.
New business.
Mayor, before we go to new business, Larry's been sitting here very patiently. I'd like to ask the council if we can go back to regulations on medical marijuana facilities. You have a draft, even in ordinance form, draft ordinance three oh two, which Larry put together based on previous conversations and input. This is a little climate sensitive. We have that moratorium ending April thirtieth. So we have tonight's meeting, which we're not even gonna talk about, starting the ordinance adoption process. But after tonight, we have three more council meetings before that moratorium expires. So if, if you would consider kind of reviewing that, especially while Larry's here tonight. Besides the draft ordinance, he also made a map with circles on it for you.
Watch your mouth.
And I can't, I can't, so would you, would the council be okay with discussing that? And, and if there's any, anything you, you love or hate, loving's okay, don't have to change it. If you hate it, we gotta make a decision, so I'll, I'm gonna respond.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
In reference to the map that was so wonderfully provided to us, I, in looking at the different zones and the different areas that have been proposed as exclusion zones, I have some concerns. I have absolutely no issue whatsoever with a thousand feet from NFK as an exclusion zone. However, the, the subsequent zones give me some concern. And the reason that I'm, I'm saying that is because if we include, for instance, if we include the community hall, which in my understanding is not a facility that is primarily used for children or children's activities, that would introduce an exclusion zone that takes up a rather substantial area of the south end of the, the shopping area. If we include City Park in that as well, again, what, what my concern is, is that by, by including these other areas, we're, in essence, we've kind of creating a bit of a red light zone in that we are okay with, with this type of, of a business, but we want to put it out of, you know, out of the way or restrict it to, to one particular area of town, which would then in my mind kind of create a, an area that's kind of set up for these things that are, are considered to be vices, so to speak. And we have, we have the liquor store down there, which also sells tobacco. And so if we wanted to, to include all of these other areas, I think that we're, we'd kind of be cutting off our nose to spite our face in a way.
What have you got to say on that?
Well, sure, but, and points well made. And when I, when I put this map together, the direction from the council in the last meeting was to look at the thousand feet from the NFK facility and from the community hall. So I started out there and, and so this was a little bit progressive to see what kind of impacts it would have. I, I heard, I guess more about the thousand feet from NFK as, as kind of a priority. Please correct me if I'm wrong. So the, the interesting thing is then, and, and let me, let me just go back a minute. The, the one thousand feet buffer, there's nothing magic about a thousand feet. You know, there's no rule that says a buffer has to be a thousand feet. But that's been kind of the standard that, that I've seen in regulations. So when you, yeah, so when you then apply the community hall and put a thousand foot buffer around that, it, you know, it eliminates, you know, some of the, the downtown core area that's just north of the bridge, as well as those commercial zone areas on the south side of Bay Street and wrapping around into the bay. But then it basically wipes out all of the areas south of the bridge. In fact, it's pretty interesting, it wipes out everything except the fire station. So, so then going beyond that, and then this is where it gets really, starts to knock out areas. Is if you do start to consider parks and, and if, and if you want to consider parks, you also need to determine where do you stop, you know? I, I just looked at the city park and the whale park, I didn't look at all the park land that exists along the, the rocky beaches, I didn't look at, you know, outside the city limits but impacting, you know, Boiler Bay. So you start to, to put all those parks on there and.
Yeah, I mean, just kind of following the example, I think it was Gold Beach, a few months ago that I heard about that, you know, they, they started creating a list of all of the places that they didn't want to have these businesses. And by the time they finished with that list, there was nothing left. And so they decided, rather than adopting their list at that time, they decided to go back and, and take. they decided to go back and, and take another look and revise it uh, because they didn't want to exclude, uh, medical marijuana facilities from, from their city. But accidentally ended up doing that anyway.
I, I did a very similar exercise for Walcourt. And, uh, you know, you keep looking at thousand foot buffers to, uh, the schools, to the library, to the parks, uh, and a couple other facilities. And it essentially wiped out the whole town. And so...
That's why they added south of town?
Well, and what, so what they ended up doing is, is they threw all that out and just went back to the state department about a thousand feet from the schools. But, um, anyway, this, you know, at least kind of tells you the story.
Well, and I'm good with the, sorry, just one more. I'm, like I said, I'm, I'm good with the sacred counting in NFK. Um, but like you said, when you include the little pocket parks and everything, um, it just, to me, it just doesn't make any sense. Um, you know, families are mobile, so, you know, families are going to go where they go. If we, you know, if we make the ordinance for businesses primarily based on, you know, children and children's activities, I think that pretty well covers it. So that's, that would be my, you know, my input.
You know, Larry, thank you for the math. It's great. And I kind of figured it was going to come out this way. Uh, the interesting thing is the city council is not in the business of denying property owners the right to use their properties. Um, we have commercial zones, marine zones. We have all these different zones people have invested in. And by, again, I'm with the exclusion zone around NFK. That's consistent with the state law. And personally, it doesn't matter to me whether we sell marijuana in town or not. I don't matter and not making a moral distinction. My problem is with this is that we're telling business owners, property owners, you cannot sell this product. And I got a problem with that because this is America. We can do everything that's legal here for the most part that needs and conforms to local and state rules. So I would, in this case, be in favor of what Joe just suggested. The exclusion zone around NFK, but hey, let the caveat empty or let the car be where. If you want to buy this stuff, buy it. I mean, we let people buy liquor. We let people buy cigarettes. We let people buy coffee. As of July of this year, I believe, it's legal.
July first, yeah.
July first. So I, I say, Larry, thanks for the work. And I think that helped me make up my mind. I'm not for restricting property rights.
My second.
So is that on motion?
No, I was just, I was just making a grandiose statement.
And I would second it.
By third.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like, I'd like to make a motion.
Wait, no.
That's okay, I can just, we can discuss it.
Okay, the motion is that I would accept Larry Lewis's, uh, schematic here of the thousand foot exclusion zone from NFK. However, everything else in the town should be allowed through the business license process to have a business selling marijuana.
My second.
Can we, uh, I would, I guess, you asked the question, can we protect the, or, or, I don't know if you call it protect, I'm not going to use that. Uh, can we put the buffers on around just NFK? And, and if, and not other areas of that, of like use? Um, like the, like the community center, like, you know, the church. Yeah, the church. Can we, can we do that just for the sake of, uh, NFK? Or, uh, do we have to, I mean, are there's other sensitive areas that we're leaving out that have, that if they knew, you know, might be here?
Okay, um, my understanding of, uh, both the, the medical marijuana and recreational marijuana law is that these businesses cannot be located anywhere within a residential zone. And so that would eliminate the church. I mean, the church is right there in houses, houses in, in a residential area. So that would eliminate that one as, as a, a potential area where such a business would be located. As far as other businesses of like kind, uh, again, it would be, you know, up to the property owner, I think. But, um, my feeling is if we're going to exclude this one legal substance, then we should be thinking about excluding other possibly hazardous legal substances as well, including alcohol and tobacco. You know, we can't, we can't split hairs and say, well, we're going to do it for this one thing, but all of these other things are okay.
Um, my feeling on that is that, um, like, like what you said, I don't think we can discriminate against them when we don't have a liquor store or, I mean, it's legal. You have to be an adult to go in. Um, I think that or... Excuse me?
I'm sorry, anything up beyond that or up, you know, would be up to either zoning or law enforcement.
Yeah, I just think that we're, you know, I think we're trying to be judged here more than we need to be.
Yes, sir.
So the direction that I, I hear this going, that would, uh, if, if you go to the, the first draft ordinance, um, towards the bottom of the first page, number two on the location, um, that would, that would basically just be changed to a thousand foot buffer from the restricted.
You know, it just occurred to me, we're going to do this through business licenses. Um, you know, I, I, a lot of other municipalities handle this differently, but, um, right now a business license is probably a hundred bucks, give or take. Is that, I, I think that's, I don't think we need to increase our business license price for this side of the movie. Does it really, at the end of the day, there's going to be any enforcement for us in the backend to deal with?
Um, if I may. Right now, when someone applies for a new business at a location in the city of Eagle Bay, the procedure is that we notify property owners within one hundred feet of that business location. There's a fourteen day appeal period. So once we, uh, so we get the business license application here and we review our zoning code and yes, they can do that business in that zone, et cetera, um, then we make a determination, administrative determination by city staff to either grant or deny. Once that determination is made, we mail notices out to property owners within one hundred feet saying, we've made this determination. You've got till such and such a date, fourteen days later, to appeal this decision. Now, if, if we're going to have a thousand foot boundary, I've given this a little bit of thought. We're going to have a thousand foot boundary, that hundred foot notification for that business license is useless. So then we should expand it to a thousand feet. So anybody within a thousand feet is going to be notified that we're, we've moved to grant or deny that business license. Right now, the fee to cover the expenses of that notification, um, is thirty dollars. If we were to expand it to a thousand feet, it should be increased. And that's just the one time fee on a new application. The annual fee for a business license, I, I don't think would need to be more than any of it.
Believe it or not.
But certainly the cost of, if the council wanted to consider that, um, like you say, to me, our hundred foot notification is kind of useless when we're, when we're talking about restricting from a thousand feet from a specific location. So is this something to think about central limits?
How much do you think it would take to, of course, it's hypothetical. If we did say a thousand feet, administratively, how much are we talking about, you think? Time and also company?
What kind of, three times? And we said ten times. I mean, you got ten times the area, ten times the property, ten times the mailing, so...
So there'd be a one time three hundred dollar fee is what you're saying?
Yeah, and we could, we could get you, uh, you know, really crunch the numbers, but I think in those ten times, a pretty reasonable estimate fee. Something to think about.
Do you remember deciding that today?
Yes.
Well, no, um, no. Because those kind of fees are not set in the ordinance that you will be, um, considering for adoption. They are set by resolution following. So, so you've got absolutely ten.
I don't know. Mr. Mayor, Council?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I don't know. Uh, I, I, I'd like to, you know, my sentiment, of course, is to, is to create a buffer and around where there's children from, um, from anything that would, that might, uh, be a part of it. But, uh, the, the legislature has taken some of this into consideration and created zones where they can say to sell and not sell. And it's been brought up on the council about private property rights. And, um, it's a private property owner, but, uh, or in the case of like saying, uh, neighbors for kids, they can restrict anything that they basically want to on their property. Okay? So, um, and I'm just, uh, of mind that the, the, the gas station sells beer and wine. Um, and, uh, many of the pub, much of the public have stated in this, uh, in the, in, uh, in legalizing marijuana, that they kind of consider use of marijuana similar to beer and wine. So I don't know, given the, the restrictions are already there, if, if we want to go down, uh, the wisdom of going down this road, uh, or not, you know, just let, uh, let the chips fall as they may and, uh, owners of private property be able to restrict the use of, of, of substance on their own property. And, uh, allow, you know, a lot of the state, state law that, you know, be, be what we about here.
Isn't, isn't there something specific about the school park being a thousand feet?
But that's not considered a school.
That's the problem.
Yeah. So it's a moral issue with the, so if there was a school there, then wouldn't we have in this discussion?
Exactly.
So it's a moral, it's a moral discussion on the part of the council.
Question, it would be a curious situation if, uh, uh, that NFK got certification as a, uh, as a student.
We had allowed someone to get a store next to it.
Right, they would be able to grant grandfather in, so, uh, uh, maybe it's wise to just protect that area seeing how it's got children, you know, and...
Well, we've got the parking lot that's up there around.
What is the difference, Jerome, between, like you said, the alcohol, wine or beer? It's the same thing, so...
Indeed.
Children are not supposed to be having access to marijuana. And there's, there's the motorcycle guys have that, that club thing, whatever it is, it's pretty close to the school. So they're probably going to, would love to have a place there for, you know, for marijuana recreation. So I don't know that, because you're talking only a thousand feet. How many feet? That's not, I don't know how many feet that is. In that, in that, you know, that motorcycle club thing, I don't know how, I don't even know what it's restated by it is.
Bikers?
Because a viper's something.
Right, and it's a retail shop.
They sell, they sell retail gear, that's what they do.
So, but that's pretty close to the school and they're probably going to want to sell marijuana there.
That's an assumption that's not really necessarily based on, I mean, you're, you're presuming that that's what they're, they're going to do. But do you, have you had any, does anyone tell you that they're, that that's what something's planning to do?
No, but I was just looking at the distance and how close it is to the school and that part of it. That's about what I'm asking.
Well, if we adopt the, the exclusionary zone of a thousand feet around the kid zone or the, the neighbors for kids, then, um, they would not, they wouldn't even be eligible for a license if they were still in that location.
Okay.
I'd like to go back to Jerome's point over here.
Just, uh, just one last question. Does, does a charter school fit in the same definition as a public school? In the state's definition of schools, thousand foot exclusion?
A charter school, I don't, actually, I don't, I don't know. I don't think charter school is addressed there. It talks about public or private.
Charter school's private.
I, I would assume that it does.
Excuse me? If charter school was always private?
No, I'd like to go back to Jerome's point. It's a good point. What if, what if we don't? You know, we say, okay, just we, you can sell it wherever you want. And then somebody does get in there. Then we, are we going to have a problem with the state at that point if NFK became a school? I think that's an interesting point you made. Because I don't know anything and I have not read anything about grandfathering somebody in because the school was there and came there after the pot shop got in. I could see us getting into some problems here. Especially if I owned a business and somebody came back to me and said, oh, it's a school now. Sorry, you're out of business. I'd have my lawyers up and ready within minutes, especially if I'm making money, so.
Are you, can I, can I?
My question though to you would be, is it the same as the Shell Station? Because it...
I make it a station between marijuana, uh, beer and wine.
Exactly.
Yes, I am.
So they, I understand you're saying that once that business is there and NFK is there, then we kick them out, but then are they, exactly?
But state law doesn't dictate with alcohol, tobacco sales, anything other than you're twenty-one or over to purchase that product. I, I see what you're saying, I do.
Uh, here's the ki, here, here's the kicker on the thing. In the context of, uh, the, the long-term planning that's going on right now for after-school programs, the Lincoln County School District and the Twenty First Century Community Learning Center Program, federal government sponsors, uh, is inclusive of neighbors for kids. And I think that what we're seeing happen is that our extended, extended school day in America will include after-school programs in the future. So I think that all of this is kind of similar to the telecommunications discussion is that there's some uncertainties about it in the future. And if we don't do something in the beginning morally that's consistent with the state law for a thousand feet and make that correct assumption that neighbors for kids is a school, then down the road, somebody's going to make it a school, then we're going to have all these other problems. I, I, I can as, as a subject matter expert on this sort of thing, since I'm vice chair of neighbors for kids, I can assure you that we're going to see a school designation, uh, at some point in the future. That's where it's all going.
Confident question.
Good.
Confident question.
Oh, wait a minute. And this is three, the second paragraph down three.
Background? Background?
The second one down, major ninety-one, that's not decided upon yet, but it'll be sent to the people for a vote.
Did you want me to read this?
Would you?
This is from Lead Oregon Cities, uh, from the City Day at the Capitol.
What?
From the City Day at the Capitol.
Yes.
All right.
Some recent information.
The, these are, there's a list of priorities. The Lead Oregon Cities will advocate for the following legislative and administrative changes in 2015. And the paragraph that Mayor Matha is, uh, asked me to read starts out by saying, "Allow city councils to prohibit retail marijuana sales and production and allow for meaningful city input in the licensing process." Major ninety-one, "Allow cities and counties to prohibit marijuana sales by an initiative vote of the people at the next general election, which would be 2016. However, under the app, OLCC would begin accepting license applications in January of 2016. Oregon has traditionally been a strong home rule state while allowing citizens to legislate correctly through the initiative process. City councils should be allowed to prohibit commercial marijuana by ordinance. Additionally, allowing citizens to vote on and opt out only at the next general election does not allow them to express their wishes at other stages of the process. Cities must also have a meaningful avenue to express concerns and objections to individual license applications." So my understanding is this is a summary put out by the Lead Oregon Cities on one... on one of the issues that they're going to be following in the upcoming.
And it is in that publication, but they also discussed the schools and and the distance away from it. So we might be voting on something that's going to be changed here. We're going to have to take this on our consideration.
I I was just going to reiterate that, yes, indeed, you will be. I, you know, there's, right now, you're addressing the the medical marijuana facilities, and it's going to come around to you here within a year where you're going to be sitting here talking about the retail facilities as well. I'm not ready to, you know.